And I like to call the Sandwich School Community Meeting of March 25th, 2020 to order. And it's a little inorthodox, but I did bring an American flag so we could do the pledge tonight. A little bit of normalcy for us. So I will shift the camera when we can do the pledge.
Fantastic.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done, Sean.
All right. Brings us to our first public forum.
So can I just jump in? So Sean, what we've done is, so there's a couple of things. Let me just do a couple of bookkeeping things as the community is hopefully watching this live. This is new. It's different for us. But so we might have a couple of little kinks that we've got to work out. But this will be an awesome app. It's been given us a great opportunity with S. Sandwich Community TV to figure out how to run one of these live through our Google Hangout. So what we're going to ask our board is that when you are not talking to Mike, to block your mic, because on mute, what happens is Google is so adept at picking up noise in the background that it'll automatically make you go live. And so we want to be careful of that. So if you are not talking, we're going to ask all of us, each of us. Plus, as you have families, there's probably a lot of stuff going on in your background. And not everybody at home probably wants to hear all of that. The second piece of that is that, again, because we're running it like this, we don't have a traditional public forum. And but we didn't want to not have that ability to have the public forum. So as you can see on this first screen, if you did want to provide a comment or ask a question that we might be able to answer later, we have a website up there. It's case sensitive. So you have the traditional HTTPS colon backslash backslash bit dot ly backslash SC public forum. For those that didn't see the posted agenda, you might also find our agenda packet at that address right there. So we'll leave that up for just a few minutes so that everyone can see. And then we'll kind of keep coming back to it if we need it. As I have put the agenda items following, you can see just, I just have the agendas. We can kind of roll through those without and leave this up there. Thoughts, questions from anybody on the board?
I have a quick question. Can you hear me?
Yes.
How do we indicate if we want to speak? Do we just turn off our mic and say, hey, I want to say something?
I can see, Kristi, I can see your mic. Most everybody can see now you've taken yourself off mute. So I think that will be a good indicator as we watch your kind of green buttons go up. We'll know that you want to say something and interrupt if you need to, you know?
Okay, sounds good.
Don't let it move on. All right.
I'm kind of confused about the camera thing. Does everybody have their camera turned off or on?
Most of the committee has it on. You don't have to. There's no rule against it. You're there. We can see your name. It's up to you. Some people don't like.
I can only see three of you, so I wasn't sure if that was like a switch. I don't mind being on camera. I just thought.
Yeah, well, either one works. Everyone's preference.
Sounds good.
I know you're a student that's been home for days now, so you might not, you might still be in your pajamas. So I don't know.
Oh, I actually, yeah, I put on an actual shirt, non-pajama shirt today.
I changed and brushed my hair for you guys today.
Fantastic. Fantastic.
Yes, great. Thank you.
All right. So I'm not getting any questions yet for the public forum. So Sean, if you.
I will move on to the report of the superintendent. I feel like you'll have a lot to say tonight.
I almost, I had, usually I can just kind of do it off the cuff, but I did write things down today because there's so much going on.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm, I'm late. I'm trying very hard to not drag behind, but I'm struggling with this online thing. So please bear with me. I'm so sorry. I just want to allow like just maybe an extra 30 seconds tonight.
Okay.
So that it, just in case I drag behind, I, I'm allowed to speak. And like what just happened, it took me three times, but I do have somebody, a tech person with me.
Perfect.
To bear with me through the, and us all through this hard time. So I appreciate your help with that.
So can you hear us in real time, Angela, right now?
Yeah, I, I can hear everything. It's just about speaking up.
Okay, you got it.
So if I want to speak, I'm going to shut my mic off because you don't want to, you're, you're absolutely right. I have a large household and you don't want to hear my stuff. And I, nor do I really want you to because my kids can be a little loud.
That's fine.
However, they've all been instructed that I'm, you know, I'm, I'm on a conference call. But you can just allow me an extra couple of seconds in case I get, you know, tied up.
You got it.
Thank you. I appreciate you bearing with me.
No problem.
I'm leaving now.
Okay.
Mute.
So, so yeah, not much really. We met last time on the 11th and we've, it's been pretty slow since the 11th, I think. I say that jokingly, of course. It's, it's been, to say it's been a whirlwind of the past kind of week and a half is an understatement. As I, as we keep saying, and I've written to parents many times, we've literally, in a matter of 24 to 48 hours, and Kristi can attest to this, we've literally changed the entire way we educate kids. I jokingly have said I've never once in my life said that, wouldn't it be nice to just teach from home? Because that's not something you ever thought could be ever possible. Now, it's certainly not traditional and it's not, it will never replace what's in the classroom. There's no doubt about that. Face to face with a teacher can never be replaced, but we're working at it. I want to thank the teachers who, on a dime, literally, I, at 1:45 on that Friday afternoon, I announced we weren't going to be coming to school on Monday. And they participated on Monday, that Monday morning, last Monday, again, feels like 25 years ago. Last Monday morning at, I think it was like 8:30, participated in a kind of a Google Hangout, virtual meeting for them. We had over 600 people on the meeting and they were, from that moment on, have literally been nonstop making sure that our kids have what they need. Mostly social emotional at this point. We've been putting a lot of learning resources up. But for the most part, we've been focusing on trying to make sure that they're touching base with the students. Finding out how they are, it's anxious for all of us. It's anxious for them. And so we want to make sure that we're understanding what the kids are feeling and how they're kind of adjusting to this new kind of normal for everybody. So I can't commend the teachers enough. There are other districts that took a little bit longer time and for all good reasons, and I appreciate that. But the fact of the matter is our teachers jumped right in. So in the jumping right in, there's always going to be fits and starts. There's ups and downs that work and don't work. I think there'll be, you know, a couple of parents that might email me and say, well, this teacher hasn't communicated as much as the, my other kid's teacher. We're going to go through that. We know that. I think parents have to understand, just like you at home, there are teachers that have levels of comfort with technology that others do not. We're working through that. We're going to do a lot of training. We put together, you know Bryce Hopper on our staff. He's been outstanding with his, his group. They've been doing tutorials. They've been trying to help in any way possible. There's a help desk that they are on nonstop. And so that's significant. We're really happy about that. The biggest thing that we want, we just, if you, I sent out a, an email to all the parents today and to the staff, is that we did just find out today the governor has essentially still closed us until and through May 3rd, which is that Sunday. So we would start on the 4th, but we don't know. And now I think we're all kind of getting that realization. We're not quite sure where it's going to go. And so I think we're going to move forward as if it's May 4th, like we need to. But I think that shifts from our two-week mentality that we started with to now this over a month. What does that look like for learning at home? And we've, we've kind of coined a phrase. I'll give the credit to Ms. Wicklund. We've coined a phrase called at-home learning experiences. And that's really what we're talking about. It's not going to be the same as it is in school. We have to accept that as a staff, but the parents need to know that we know that and the kids need to accept that. And but, but there's different ways to do it. I've seen posts all over the place about parents who are doing so many different things with their kids. You know, I, someone wrote on Facebook the other day, it was, we've lamented for years about how we lost Home Ec in, in school. You know, because we're focusing on MCAS and doing all those. Well, parents are cooking with their kids. And that is teaching the Home Ec skills that they need. That is teaching MAP. That is teaching science. It's just different. The kids are still learning. They're just learning differently. Going out to walks and the hike, all the trails in Sandwich. I know they're mobbed. That's teaching about nature and there's science in that. And what are we looking at? And all those kinds of things. And so I think we have to realize that that is still learning. Not the exact same, but it is still learning and we're kind of excited for that. So we've, we've got things that we know we need to kind of talk about. What that learning experience at home is going to look like? We've spent the first week and a half trying to assess the students that are getting online because I think that's really important for us, is who is accessing the stuff we've been putting online and who isn't? Because we can't move really forward until we understand why they're not. Is it a simple that, you know, they took the first week and they're just taking their time with their family? I can live with that. I accept that. All right. But let's, where are we going now? Is it that they don't have access to internet at home? We need to then, how can we provide alternative things for them so that they can be learning? And, and so those are some comments. And are there other reasons that kids are not accessing what we're putting out there? So we'll, we'll kind of work through some of that. I know that there's a significant question. Those students are at the secondary. What's going to happen now with spring sports? Just today's meeting itself throws that into a little bit of a tizzy because we weren't, the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association had made the determination that we weren't going to be starting until April 27th. Well, what does May 4th do now? Does that, and thankfully on the, on the positive side, I am very involved in the MIAA. And so I think I'll have, I'll get some information about that probably in the next day or so. And what does that look like? And what's, what, what is it going to look like for the MIA to say at some point, if the school doesn't go back before X day, we probably won't have a spring season? And we have to just be realistic about that. We're not there yet, thankfully, but what would that look like? And those kinds of things. And then the seniors, we know that that's a significant issue. Understandably, seniors are feeling pretty bad for themselves right now. They have every right to feel bad for themselves. We just need to figure out what things can we do before the end of June to kind of make things right, as right as we can for them. We'll have to figure that out. Right now, graduation is still on. All the things that we would normally do are still on. I think we'd have to look at senior prom. I forget the exact, oh, the, the date of that is at the end of May. So far, still on. Until we continue to go further and get different information, we need to know that. So I'll try to keep the parents and you guys as posted as much as possible. But those are some pretty big things that we know kids want to know about, first of all. And then certainly the, the parents and the community. Kristi, I think you might want to know that as you have high school kids, right? So, so anyway, that's, it's, it's crazy. I've never seen the pace of education change as fast as it has. It has been a whirlwind, but I cannot give enough credit to our admin team, to our teachers, to all the administrators that are in the district because it's like they haven't skipped a beat. It's been overwhelming, to be sure, but our, what we're focusing on is trying to make sure that it's as quote unquote, "normal" as it can be for kids at home, as, as not normal as this whole situation is. So questions, thoughts on that? Anybody?
Hi, I have a question.
Yep.
Is it okay, Sean, or I guess, okay.
Yeah.
So I'm glad to hear you talk a little bit about, you know, how, what expectations are going to be for teachers and students and parents going forward. And I was just wondering, today I received a memorandum of agreement between the Barnstable Public Schools and the Barnstable Teachers Union. And it basically outlines a couple of things that are expected. For example, teachers are expected to have, starting next week, to have office hours during, like, you know, between, like, let's say 10 and 12 every day. So that students know that they can reach their teachers during that time if they have questions or whatever. And I, I think going forward, I'm expecting that there will be some more guidance as to what the online or what the at-home learning experiences will look like. And if we, how we are expected to, to interact with our students. And how, I mean, at some point, I think we probably need to move from reviewing, putting things online to actually how, how are we going to, you know, share new information with our students and assess that? So I mean, that's a lot to talk about, but I guess my main question is, are, is there a plan to involve the union or to establish some more concrete expectations at this point?
Sure. Already in process, as you can imagine. So what we've been, so we've gotten a lot of that same stuff. I have the information from Barnstable. It also then goes, there's one out there, Kristi, that I've seen that's 17 pages long.
Oh, wow.
It's a little overwhelming for teachers, right? So we, we've talked about it with our admin team. We've been already crafting. We're working on a Google Doc right now. That's kind of, we're, what we're doing is putting together what we can consider kind of our final draft. We've been in communication with the union. We're going to share that with them, probably tomorrow. I wanted to, we're going to probably share that with them. And then we have a conference call with the commissioner on Friday morning, I believe, Friday morning at 8:30. We'll probably have a little bit more information with that. So it'll be kind of, we might make some early tweaks just based on what he might say. But for the most part, it is exactly what you're saying. What are the expectations from a student perspective? What are the expectations from a staff perspective? Office hours are all in there. So it's one of those things that we could have spent the time. So Barnstable chose to spend the time taking, doing that. We kind of jumped right in. I don't think either is wrong. We jumped right in and we're just kind of figuring out, but mostly we jumped in saying, we want to make sure we're touching base with the kids and not wait a week to two weeks while we're having kind of these official types of conversations. So we're not perfect. We definitely have had ups and downs because even when you do that without any kind of guidance that you're talking about, we have teachers that have been going like way up here and then some that have kind of stayed to the minimum in the sense of what we'd said, because that's where their comfort level is too. So we need to kind of bring everybody back towards kind of the same place and we know that. But we are working with the union on that and we are absolutely administratively working on that. And, and it, that, as we keep calling it, assessment might be a little tricky only because it's now the accessibility piece for all kids. If you can't get on the internet at home and we're doing everything on a Google Classroom or whatever it might be, we can't punish that kid for that. And we need to figure out ways to do this. So accountability is a little different, but what kind of learning experiences are they going to be able to get? Because I agree with you. We need to provide newer, we can't just keep giving them the same worksheets over and over again. So what would that look like moving forward?
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
We're having now.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Gould. And I, you know, I'm not at all being critical of your approach.
Oh, I know that.
I think that it was really, maybe proud to be part of the Sandwich Community seeing the way that the parents and the, the families and the teachers all pulled together to provide communication to the kids. I think it was really well done. I guess I just, I'm looking forward to the, to the next phase, especially after getting, hearing about the, you know, the May.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, it's sort of, sort of really changes the way we think about everything. So, and as you mentioned, I don't know if you have any more updated information about how to get students who don't have, like, how many students do we have that don't have a device? Who need a device that don't have internet? Do you know any numbers?
Yeah. Yeah. So we sent out, we had sent out a Google, so seven to 12, we know everybody has one. So we're not, we were never worried about that. Three to six, everyone has one. They just didn't take them home. So what we had sent out before, right at, right before, right as school got out, in a sense, was that kind, it was kind of funny. The survey I sent around to all third to sixth grade parents was to say, what kind of access do you have? Do you have a computer at home, blah, blah, blah? So it was great. We're like, oh, we're not going to need that many Chromebooks to send home to kids because they're, they have them. Well, what I think parents realized pretty darn quickly as they were working from home, when you have one computer at home and, ooh, two kids and then two adults trying to, that's not going to work. So when we said, okay, come to Oak Ridge and pick up a Chromebook, we thought there were going to be about 40 people. Well over 100 people came looking for, which was great. And so we still, we're still kind of continuing it on. I think Bryce was up there today or tomorrow looking at making sure that all kids have access because I think what it is, is they're figuring this life out. And that's all well and good to say you have a computer, but one isn't going to hold the whole family. And so we're good with that. We have one for every student, grades three through 12. So we're not worried about that. And we have it required. And I don't see us doing this K to two. It won't be the same. If they have some access to the internet, they should be okay, but they don't have to have necessarily their own Chromebook. And we've been printing a lot of the stuff at, at all levels, but mostly the K to two if, if it's needed. So the accessibility, I'm, the accessibility is more about the kids that don't have internet, even at the secondary, because I would imagine that kids, yeah, we give them a Chromebook, but they might be doing that in the library and not at home because they don't have the internet at home. So now if they don't have the ability to get to the internet, to the library, how do we make sure that they can access their education? And that's an issue. We have looked at ordering hotspots. It's not that we looked into, we actively are trying to order hotspots, but as you can imagine, they were on backorder for weeks because everyone's trying to do the exact same thing. And so Bryce is continuing that work, but we'll see what we can do with that. Because we would need a decent amount. And then that whole thing is what's the cost of that? And how do they function that way? But lots to work on, definitely.
I think there's something else that we would need to look at too, from a, from a technology standpoint.
Yep.
So you have two parents working at home, working from home now. So that's, so they have a basic Wi-Fi network at home. Maybe one, two kids at home with their phones and now phones. They, the kids could have, or somebody's going to have an issue accessing it as the bandwidth gets.
No question, Sean.
Huge up. So I think that's something we, we might end up running into as well.
Yeah.
Now, I believe Department of Education, Massachusetts Department of Education is coming down with some guidelines tomorrow. Is that?
Well, yes, yes. Tomorrow, Friday morning is our conference call, I believe. Unless he changed it to Thursday. I got a note earlier today that was Friday. The, the issue is going to be, Sean, and it's hard. I don't envy the commissioner's position. And, and I say that because you have people in this state, you go to the western part of the state, they, they're barely working on dial-up internet. That's just the way it is. They just don't have the accessibility that we have. Then out here, and so he's going to manage the entire state and the expectation. So for him to just come out and say, we're going to go all schools on a learning platform, let's go, online. Well, that doesn't work for Western Mass or a lot of other districts that don't have the money to send home a kid with a device like we do. And so that, there's some, he's got to kind of play that middle of the road in a sense. So I don't know, Sean, if we're going to get such specific guidance.
Right.
I think we're going to get some generalizations and we get to decide how it looks for us. Does that make sense? That's my, I want it, believe me. I want him to tell us exactly what we're supposed to do. But I just have a funny feeling it might not be as specific as that.
But again, as we've, there's no, there's no real playbook for this, so.
There isn't. There isn't.
So be interesting to see what happens.
I know. Carrie, Carrie, you're off yet?
Yeah, so I have a couple of questions. The first is if the schools either don't open till May or like Kansas and Virginia decide not to open, how is that going to change the learning goals for next fall? Because kids would insist. And then how does this work for teacher evaluations? And are they, are they waiving those requirements?
Sure, sure. So let's deal with the first one first, so the learning goals. On the, on the bright side, we're all in the same situation, right? So even if a district that's got more access to technology than anybody else and all that kind of stuff, again, that learning is still not going to replace what's in the classroom. So we're all going to start the school year kind of a little behind. We just have to know that and accept that if we don't finish the year. And so what that will look like, Carrie, is not your traditional school year start. It'll be a little bit of review for probably the first month, no doubt about it. So if you're going from English, you know, one to two at the high school level, for example, you are definitely going to be doing a lot more review of what would have happened in English one. It's just the way it's going to be, second grade and the third grade, same kinds of things. So the teachers are going to have to adjust there. And they'll have to find ways that they can maybe try to catch up during the year. So next year will be a little more frenetic for a teacher too, but as well as the student. So the, the second part was to evaluations. That is, there was, part of the guidance that I have now came from a conference call yesterday with the commissioner. So what the commissioner has asked for is, we, the state is broken up into kind of round tables for superintendents. I'm on the Old Colony Roundtable. So that's kind of the South Coast and the Cape. And so what he had asked for was all a representative or two from each of the roundtables. And they did a conference call yesterday after, I forget which one he did first. He was also doing a conference call with both of the major unions in the state, the Mass Association of School Superintendents, the MASC. And so there was a big conference call about that because he can't come out and mandate something if the MTA is not going to go along with it, right?
Right.
Or if it's going to create all kinds of havoc. So parts of what I'm saying to you are coming from that. It's not necessarily from his mouth yet to us. And we've got to kind of hear that. So evaluation, so the whole long, why I just went around the story. Evaluation was on there and he just isn't at the place yet to, to talk about it. We're making sure the kids are learning first and then we'll kind of talk about that, what happens with that. And the big.
I know.
On renewal.
There was a happy dance in our house when we heard that the MCAS might be.
Yes.
Great.
So what happened here, we know last week the president got up and made a statement that there are no accountability tests. That's fine. And, and that's, there's nothing wrong with that. But then what has to happen is the way the law works, it has to come from the federal government with down to the governor. What the governor did was he, he has put forth a bill, I think yesterday, the day before, again, losing my days, where it gives power to our commissioner to make that decision. So once that is passed, he's going to have that ability to do that. So his biggest thing right now is, I think, less about the K to eight type of mentality than what's going on with the 10th grade.
Right.
How do we manage the 10th grade and make sure that it doesn't limit the amount of times a 10th grader can take it for those that are struggling to graduate? That stuff he's also going to play down. I, he, as he said today on the press conference, if you got to see it with the governor, he said, once he has granted that power, he will have an answer pretty quick. I think he knows what he wants to do. It's just he can't say it publicly.
Okay. And then my, my last question is the, our special education students.
Yep.
Who, their teachers have been great. Therapists have been reaching out. I'll tell you, every parent I've spoken to says, we're not having home services, but that's okay. We want everyone to be safe. What, no complaints about that. There's a worry among parents that we're not special educators.
Absolutely.
And our kids turn 21 in a heartbeat just now because this, everything has gone away. So I'd like to know if, and you don't have to answer me now, but if BJ is coming up with any parent tools for this cohort so that we can, so when we go back to school, our kids, they're already going to be so far behind, but.
Yeah. So the answer is yes. So BJ's been outstanding. You know how you see people, they kind of rise to an occasion? He has been outstanding in this. So he has taken the lead with his staff. So they're going to be able to produce some things. I think, Carrie, when this all first happened, we were like, oh my God, we can't educate anybody because we don't want to make sure that we're hurting our special needs, students with special needs. We've, we've morphed a lot on that in the sense that, first of all, there's a lot of different learning that can take place, even online. I have a good friend of mine that, a woman in her district, a good friend of mine, she's a superintendent and a woman in her district running for school committee. Her daughter has Down syndrome. And this woman sent a picture to this friend of mine, talking, she was having a down day. The Down syndrome girl was having a down day. She, you know, you never know why. She couldn't figure it out. The teacher called in on a Google Hangout and there's this picture of her just staring at her teacher, talking with her teacher. That meant the world to the mother, to the daughter. And as simple as that was what made her day. So those things, now what else was being done? I'm sure there was other things being done, but it was so cool to see that picture. I wish you forwarded it to me.
I'll say that the special educators and the agents and the therapists have all reached, well, I won't speak just for myself, but I know from other parents I've talked to that we've been very lucky with the, that the care that they've been giving.
And that's one of the reasons I'm glad we jumped in so that there wasn't a two-week lag of having that kind of communication with, with the kids. Now, it does need to be, so there's two parts to Carrie, what you were saying. One is how, how do we make that work? What kinds of learnings can still happen? And in doing some training videos maybe for some parents so that we can send those to parents, the different things that you can do for speech and language, et cetera. Because you're right, you're not trained in this. They're your children and you adore them, but that's not your background. And how do you do that? And then the second piece is, and even the commissioner has come out and talked about this, is that we all, those of us in the special education world and education know what we talked about is compensatory damages. Well, compensatory damages is if the district kind of intentionally did something wrong. We all know that that's not intentional. No one is willing this to happen. So now shifting towards going to the reality, Carrie, that these students on IEPs, even no matter what we can do online, is not going to replace what could have happened in a classroom. So what kind of additional services would we provide after we get back to try to make it as normal and back to whole as possible? It's still some work on that. We got to figure that out, but it is being worked on at the state level and the federal level.
And then my last comment would be to the parents out there, like so many of us that are essential.
Yep.
Our kids are home.
I know.
With their siblings.
Yeah.
So I think we have to keep, be cognizant of that.
There's no question. I agree with that too. Yeah, it's a good point. And I think we have to keep remembering that. Who else? Anybody else?
If you have anything else to say?
I'll keep you as updated as I can, obviously. These poor, you poor parents, those of you that are parents, you're going to be really, really, really tired of me by the time this is all said and done because I've sent more emails. They're going to be like, oh, here she is again with something else, but we'll keep communicating as much as possible.
Thank you very much.
All right.
I guess that brings us to acknowledgements. I'm sure there's this point to acknowledge, but does anybody have anything that they would like to acknowledge tonight?
I, I know it's been said before, but I can't even begin to like say enough about how our teachers have responded to this challenge and how they've reached out to the students. And I, I think, you know, I keep talking about expectations and it's like your typical, you know, student who always wants to make sure that, you know, they're doing the right thing and everything. But I think teachers probably. But I think teachers probably, um, just reacted from the heart and they contacted their, their students and made them to understand that even though they couldn't see them every day, they were still accessible. And I think that that really made a huge difference in, um, in, in everyone's experience of this, um, this bizarre, unusual, surreal experience. Um, so, and I, I, I really appreciate too, Pam, how you have provided a lot of consistent communication throughout this whole thing. Um, we, you know, we don't know what to expect because it's never happened before. But I think one thing that our community, our school community and our community did really well is band together and make sure that they were, we were always in communication and that we understood that we were all working together to to solve the problem. So I, that's kind of my long-winded acknowledgement of everyone involved in this process. So thank you to the teachers and and administrators.
Well said, well said, Christine. I think when I, as you were just finishing that, thinking about, could you imagine, though, if we were doing, trying to do this 20 years ago without the technology that we have now? What would be happening?
I can't even imagine, that's something I think about every day.
Yeah, and the things we're learning, and we're going to be different teachers when we go back. Without a doubt, because we can't help but have to learn some of this stuff. Just this Google Hangout, I mean, I knew Google Hangout, but the thing we're being able to make it do is amazing. Angela, you have your.
It's a fight here. Okay, great, thank you. I'm sorry, I hoped I hit the right button.
You did.
So I wanted to acknowledge you, Dr. Gould. Um, you've done such a great job keeping in touch with the parents and the community, even coming down to the Oak Crest basketball courts, which, which, you know, was probably clearly our students. But, you know, I mean, I thought, gosh, is that really our job to police that too? But, you know, you just take on all sorts of everything and you always make sure that if it's anything to do with our students or our children, that you make sure that you, you release the right information and, you know, let the, them know that the Board of Health had closed down the area. So I, I appreciate that you did that today. Um, I also wanted to acknowledge the teachers, uh, just like Christie did. Um, I think they've gone above and beyond, and there's a lot of professions right now going above and beyond. The teachers are doing this stuff from home right now and just trying the best they can. Even the gym teachers, I mean, I'm, I, I, the, the, I'm on a text group with my kids, so I get everything they get. And when, when they get, they get homework, they, I, I'm just so impressed with our gym teachers right now. I'm glad our athletics department costs us a bunch of money. And it's nice to see that it's actually paying off in, in times like in today when it's, it's so tragic. And we, we really need to know who is rising above and beyond the call of duty. It's nice to see that people that, you know, are top-heavy, which seems, you know, when you look at our budget, which I have in front of me, if, when you look at things like that, if, if, if you look at what they're doing, it, it just makes it all worth it. So I'm really impressed with that. Um.
Well, I think you go back to the, the village thing, when you look at the, the screen that's up there right now, that a couple of weeks ago, I had asked teachers to kind of, what, if you could brand our, our district, what would it be? What would you say would be our branding kind of? Almost to a person, they came back with Sandwich United, and I think that says it all. I think it does take a village, there's no question about it. When you look at, you should see the people, the volunteering that's happening at the food drive down at the, at the high school and the lunches being served every day. They're there almost every day, there's a group of them and we're trying to rotate so that they don't get burnt out. But it's just, it makes you proud to see that.
And that was my next comment, was the food staff and the food service. And what's going on in our community is just unbelievable. It's, I mean, it brings a tear to my eye about how great everybody really, really is in his being. And, you know, I wish I could be more a part of it. I have, I have an immune-compromised child and I can't leave my house right now. I can't even go to work, it's, it's awful, and I'm a first responder. And I had to say, you know what, I can't go. I'm sorry, but I have to put my family first.
Absolutely.
And I did that, and, and I, and I'm able to do it with, with the help of everybody, you know, and, and, you know, my, my family and, and the support we have here were just so great. So just everybody's come together and, and the community as a whole, and it's really nice to see. So I just wanted to say, you know, thank you again to yourself and the teachers and everyone.
Thank you.
I think it's worth noting, um, um, just how this community has come together, um, between Marshland stepping up and helping with.
Amazing.
Meals, you know, when we needed them to help. Um, and then even from a non-educational standpoint, you have competing restaurants out there pushing, you know, helping each other and propping each other up right now. Uh, really is, you know, it's sandwich, it's what we are, so, um.
Pretty cool.
Teachers and everything, I think, um, I think the community definitely deserves some recognition as a whole.
Absolutely. One of the things that's been pretty cool, Sean, and it's really helped me too in, in some of the, the things that I've been publishing and the work that we're doing is the, the J.J. Burke and the, the Towns Command Team. And they thought to put me on that, which I think I was, felt pretty good about because it puts you in that, that we meet every single morning or have a conversation at nine o'clock every single morning, sometimes at four, also at four in the afternoon, depending on what's been going on. But that has been invaluable to me as a superintendent, never mind, first of all, we are one of the very few districts out there that do what they have been doing. Uh, we have districts around us that are kind of stealing our press releases and stealing all the information we're putting out because their communities haven't been doing it. But to be that far ahead of what's going on in this town, um, is, with the emergency personnel, has been outstanding. And so it, it really has helped us craft what we do and is that we're all kind of saying the same things to our community, which is important. So a shout out to, uh, to the, we call it the COVID-19 Command Team, they're doing a great job.
And, uh, Sean, if I could? Jim, please.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd also obviously like to acknowledge our teachers and Dr. Gould as well for just really being a, a steady, calm voice at the top of this ship. You know, from last Friday, shutting it down for, for two weeks to really every good decision since. And to what Angela was saying before about the community, without a doubt, a thank to all the parents. The, the way they're using social media to share different tools, be it educational tools to help out, or I love the idea, they're sharing tools how the kids can still interact with each other.
Yeah.
With the fit, the Messenger on Facebook or one of these other things. Because it's important not only for the kids to be in contact with their teachers, but their friends as well. Because they are obviously experiencing something tremendously unique. So again, a, a thank you to, to our parents, our social workers as well within the schools that put themselves up to the kids. I mean, it, it really is had, it really has truly been Sandwich United, so thank you again.
Well said, and there's, there's a whole team of people that do it, so that's really important too.
Definitely.
And if we have no other acknowledgements, uh, I will move on to new business, which is our policy updates of a policy DGA, which, um, we, uh, Christie, myself and Pam met last night. And, um, I don't know if you have it in front of you here on the screen, um.
I do, shoot, I didn't put that, oh, wait a minute, hold on, I can get it, you keep talking.
So basically what DGA, um, the policy speaks to is, um, basically signing warrants, expense warrants. And, um, there was nothing in there that really spoke to a situation where, um, for example, we would not be able to get a majority there or even a couple of people, uh, say in an instance where there's lots of social distancing, uh, for example. Um, so what we did is we came up, we added some language to it. Um, and, uh, just, just to allow for, for the chair, you know, does, you know, uh, a designee to, to come in in an instant where, uh, we don't have that. Um, we don't have a quorum or enough people to sign, um, so they can just sign in that situation. Um, so we can keep the, the money flowing and the bills getting paid. Um, Pam, were you able to get that?
I know, I, I didn't pull up, they, I was pulling up only the folder, so.
So what I can do is I'll, I'll just, I can just read it.
Yeah, read, all right, sorry, Sean.
So the, the previous, um, policy read, um, the superintendent or designee will sign payrolls presented for approval. Uh, a majority of the members of the Sandwich School Committee will sign expense warrants presented for approval at school committee meeting. Uh, and then we added, if the chair determines that the majority of members cannot sign the warrants due to absence or emergency, the chair or his or her designee, uh, may substitute his or her signal, si- single signature for the signatures of the majority. Uh, and then the municipal treasurer signs all checks, drawn against the school department, no other signatures valid, yada, yada, yada. Um, so we, we approve, as a policy subcommittee, we approved that last night. Um, so we're bringing it to you for discussion and, um, a vote, uh, this evening. So if anybody has anything they'd like to discuss or any questions, that would be, uh, now would be the time to do it.
Can you share the document so we can read it or?
We're, um.
I, I'm going to, Holly's, Holly's on here. Holly, could you dump into this, uh, school committee agenda packet, the updated?
If for some reason we can't, um, if you open a second tab, if you're in Chrome or something, that opened a second tab, you can open your mail twice and you can just go to the next tab. But there is a, there, um, did you send that to all of us, Pam, or just, uh, Carrie and I, just Christie and I?
Um, I can share it, uh, am I allowed to share it, though?
Yeah, you can.
Okay.
I'll put it up on the screen so everyone can see it. Sean, just while she's doing that, the, the other one that was impacted, which we didn't have last night, was, uh, filed, uh, policy DK, which is payment procedures.
Yep.
It also talks about, there's, there's a, the sentence in there, it almost reads the exact same. As an operating procedure, at each regular meeting, the Sandwich School Committee will receive lists of bills for payment from school department funds. The list will be certified as correct and approved for payment with signatures by a majority of the school committee. And then, so we can either revisit that the next time.
Yeah, well, I think we'll have to, we have to definitely have to have a policy meeting, um, it has to come out of policy from a change on that one.
So this one, we'll take care of this right now.
Um, so any, any discussion on that? Anybody, um, any questions, once it's up?
All right, so you're, Chris, sorry, for people at home, I apologize that you're staring at my computers.
I did, I just shared it with everybody, so if people want to open it or.
Got to find it, Christie. And I apologize to the people at home.
It's a learning experience, we're figuring this out.
I know, I know, but I'm not finding it either from Christie coming in yet. Oh, here we go. All right, Carrie, can you see that?
Yeah, I got the email from Christie.
Okay, so the red is the change.
Right. I guess my concern is that due to absence, because what constitutes, you know, if we can get two out of, if we get three out of the five signatures, let's say, of the majority.
Well, I think sometimes, uh, uh, and I'm just, I'm throwing this out, Chrissy, uh, Carrie, I'm not sure if this is the best scenario that I'm talking about. There have been times when we don't meet all the time in the summer and, and bills have got to get paid and people are on vacation. And so if you have, if the, if, if enough people are on vacation that that can't constitute a majority, that puts us in an emergency situation. Really absent would put you in the emergency.
I, I, I think that my only hesitation is this puts a lot of fiduciary responsibility on the chair and you can have school committee members that put it on the back burner, so there's always an absence. So my, my only concern is in the, of the chair, that, that's a lot of responsibility to review every warrant and sign on behalf of everybody.
Well, but it does, the sentence reads, the chair determines that the majority cannot sign the warrants. It wouldn't be on a normal basis, that's, Sean was very clear on that on the policy.
It, I mean, the, the way we wrote it, or at least the intent of this.
Yeah, intent, right.
To, uh, really in a situation like this, or in, you know, extreme weather circumstances, you know, thing, things of that nature, not, I mean, not necessarily that, you know, it's, it's a, you know, a Tuesday in, you know, in, in July or August and just nobody could get there. Um, you know, it's really for these circumstances that are really out of the ordinary.
And if I may, wasn't this a policy just recently written by two current school committee members? Or more? How many, how many members were involved in, in writing the policy?
No, it was our, it was our policy subcommittee, which is, um, currently only a two-member.
Yeah, it's two members.
Because Ms. Eric.
No one anymore on this one.
And is there, is there any provision for a, a substitute in the event that the chair can't be there? Or is this?
It'll be, that's where it says the, the chair or, uh, chair, his or her, his or her designee.
Okay.
And we can designate, you know, and in that, it would probably be something along the lines of chain of command, chair, vice chair, secretary, tenured member.
Right, which sounds like a very typical policy of any normal business or corporation. Should there be a problem, you know, if there was some problem in my corporation, I would defer to my mother, who is my, my second in charge of my own, so just being personal, but for a second there. But, you know, if, if, if two of our members wrote the policy and I don't know, it's, it sounds like something I might lean to support. If, I, I just remember times when there wasn't anybody in the summertime to sign warrants or when somebody was off on a, a, you know, maternity or paternity leave or of some sort. Uh, so I think this might be a great idea, just saying.
I mean, go, go ahead.
Uh, I was just going to say, maybe we could take the word absence out or we could qualify it with, um, maybe Jim would have like a, a legal term, I don't, not unforeseen, but unusual. Or, um, I guess the, the, the situation I'm thinking of is if someone is out of the state, then we're probably not going to expect them to, you know, drive six hours or fly home to sign the warrant. So that's why I put abs- absence in there because.
Could, could, could we use the term unforeseeable absence or emergency? Unex- or unexpect, you know, some, unforeseeable, unexpected? Um, that way, it's just not a scheduling conflict that shows, you know, you know, someone's either incapacitated or, um, quarantined, um, with that. Would that be, uh, Carrie, does that? Um.
I was, I was putting, just putting it out there, that it puts a lot of responsibility on the chair if it's just due to absence. Because, you know, part of, yeah, this is a commitment, right? So it's one thing if one person is out of town, we have a majority of people who can still sign the warrants and review them. It just puts a lot of responsibility on yourself, is all I want to acknowledge.
So, so say if we were to just leave it to the term, for, to go to unforeseen emergency instead of remove the term absence. Um.
I, I'm just one member, I mean, if you, it, I'm just throwing the concern out there. And I'm not saying you have to change the policy that, that you guys vetted, that's fine, I'm just putting.
How did everybody else feel about it? Um, Jim?
Uh, Mr. Chair, no, I'm, I'm happy with giving the chair that that's sort of, I guess, authority, if you will. He, he or she is the chair and, you know, it's, I, I can't see a, or see a scenario when it would be abused in any way. So I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable, I, I like that we're discussing, I like the concern being brought up, but I, I'm comfortable with it as it's written.
Okay. Um, if there is no further discussion, I will take a motion.
Sean, I move that we pass, oh, gosh, I have, I don't know, I have.
D, D, it's policy DGA.
Policy DGA as discussed and written. Is that good?
So we have a motion from Angela, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Jim, any discussion on the motion?
Shouldn't the motion be to the, to waive the first reading?
All right.
Second reading?
I'll make the motion, waive the second reading of the.
I'll make the motion, waive the second reading of the policy update to the DGA and move for a vote this evening.
Okay. Motion by Dawn.
Motion as well.
Second by Jim. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Sounds like the motion passes.
That was a aye.
Unanimously.
Six to nothing.
No, I voted no.
Oh, aye, 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 sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, nay.
I I now move to approve the job, the uh policy update as presented.
Second.
Motion by Jim, second by Dawn. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
No.
Motion passes. Brings us to old business, Student Opportunities Act.
Okay, go ahead. Sorry. Sorry, Sean, if I cut you off.
You didn't.
Okay, we don't have the same social cues here on computer as we do if I'm looking at you. Um the student act, this should be a really easy one. I, we had put this back as it was going to be something we were going to have to sign off on tonight. Because it was supposed to be uploaded to the to the state portal by April first. That is clearly something that they have put an extension to. Uh we don't have a date yet, but so we will be revisiting. Uh I had done some more work on it after the last meeting, but to be quite honest, not a whole lot. It went right to the wayside. Uh and we have a very small form, like I said, we have to do, some of the states have a significantly long form, so I think it was an acknowledgement of that for the rest of the. School district. So I will kind of just ask that we put this on the back burner and it'll come back to you again when I have a new deadline. All right. Can you all hear me?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
Job description, second reading.
Okay, so um this is the job description that we had put in last week and we needed to hear back from the union. I had still not heard back from the union on this. So we could do one of two things. We can hold on it, which is not, again, I'm trying to pull this up here. Uh way to go. I had it up. Um not an emergency if we hold on it right now because we won't be posting yet, obviously. Um, hold on, there we go. Um. So or the only thing I had made, we had made change in since the last time. I didn't catch it. It was my fault. It wasn't a full-time. It it's it's a school year. So as I said to uh the the S E A, this is. Uh not in a, I mean, it's an additional position on the one side, but it's replacing two positions and we're getting uh much-needed reading specialists that. That's needed. So we can do one of two things. You could either pass it pending the approval of the S E A or just say, let's wait till the next meeting. Um either can work. Obviously, we were just looking to get it in in time to be able to post it.
Um I'm not sure.
Right now, so.
I'm not sure how the committee feels. Uh personally, I think we'd, I would rather wait for the union. Let's just get it right. But if anybody else has a uh. Uh another opinion on that, um please speak. All right, and we will table this for a future uh meeting.
No worries. Yeah, we've got pretty busy doing some other stuff, so.
That brings us to warrants. Which uh we have not had a chance to uh sign or see.
Sean.
Hello?
I know, I know we don't normally do this, but for tonight, I'd like to separate the school warrants versus the student activity account warrants, if that's possible.
Absolutely.
Admit the student activity ones, Ca- Ca- uh Carrie. We pulled, we.
Back to review.
I don't, uh that, but we pulled them back, yeah. For the question that you had asked, I didn't, I had was made aware of the questions you would ask later and so withdrew those.
Okay, so so the co- committee understands the student activity account warrant. Well, you guys looked at it, so I, but they have um a spring musical in there, a possibly non-refundable deposit for the prom. And although it's the students' money, I didn't feel comfortable that we should commit their money to something that might not be refundable to them. So that was my question for Michelle.
We'll have to look at the contract to see what are the parameters. You're right. I mean, we did, those are, it's like all the field trips we've been trying to work through. What are, what are the legal requirements about payment and all that kind of stuff? So we have to look at that.
As with any venue.
Yeah, absolutely. So 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 anyway, we did separate Carrie for that reason, so. You'd be only war- Pat, you're only voting on the warrants for the other side, the payment side, you know, the school side, the operating budget, sorry.
I have a quick question about the um the tuition payments to the out-of-state.
Sure.
Out-of-district placements. Are those still going ahead as scheduled or?
So what all we've done right now, that that is also significantly up for discussion, as you can imagine. Uh we talking about that, we're talking about the transportation contracts and those kinds of things that is being discussed at length. Uh mostly at the, at Michelle Austin's level of the uh business managers and getting some guidance from the state on that. Um all we've done is, when I had a conversation with Michelle, we're just making sure we kind of have paid up to where we stopped going to school. We're kind of paying our bills up to where we are and that's it right now. And then we all have to get some guidance to to move forward.
So in other words, you're saying that the the tuition is for the.
Like up to March.
Closed.
Yeah, yeah.
On that same note, I had asked about the bus drivers and I know the Abbey Group to um employees who put on unemployment. But their paying mechanism is different. They get paid on meals that they sell. On the bus contract side, though, those bus drivers are on unemployment as well. Are we paying the bus contract?
Well, that's one of the things. So that's the the discussion that has to come up. So one of the things we've asked for first from first student. Is a breakdown. So the discussion amongst superintendents and business managers is now. You have this contract with this company and it's broken up into a variety of different pieces. One is the salaries of the drivers. One is gas, one is maintenance and, you know, I'm making up all the different things, plus some overhead, to be fair, the company gets a profit. I understand that. Um so I, the simple thing I look at is, so there's been no gas being purchased. So what does that look like? Um we're, you know, we need to know if if we're not paying the full salary of the the driver. And you're paying unemployment, which isn't a full salary, what's the discussion around that? And so it is being had. No one has a great answer yet. The the essentially what the law, Massachusetts state law says. Jim, jump in on this in a minute, but if if there's no services performed, there is no contract. All right, so that's that's the essential piece of it. We all need to then figure out, well, but parts of it were performed. What does that look like? Um and no one wants to leave a company out on the high and dry either because we're also going to need a company when we come back. So. It's, Carrie, it is being discussed at length. I know that there have been at least two to three conference calls already. Uh with the D E S E on this, with the business managers, trying to kind of make sure we're doing all the right things. So all talked around. I don't have a perfect answer for you yet. All I can tell you is we've only paid up through March. We haven't paid ahead anything yet. Until we know. So that's where we're at.
All right.
Okay.
So then.
Minutes.
We have to approve them first, the uh the warrants first.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we accept the warrants as presented, not including student activity accounts.
Perfect.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Carrie, second by Christie and whatever dog was squeaking a toy there.
Sorry about that.
No, it's fine. Um any discussion? Seeing none, I will take a vote. All in favor of the warrants?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Brings us to the minutes of March eleventh, twenty twenty and March sixteenth, twenty twenty. Do we have um a motion?
Well, if we want to do them in order, I move to accept the minutes of March eleventh, twenty twenty.
Second.
Motion by Jim, second by Carrie. Is there any discussion on the March eleventh, twenty twenty minutes? Seeing that, I will take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Do we have a vote on the March sixteenth, twenty twenty uh minutes?
I move that we accept the minutes from the emergency meeting of March sixteenth as presented.
Second.
Motion by Christie, second by Jim. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, that brings us to PTA, PTSA, Special Education PAC, School Council and Board of Selecting Report. All right, I can't imagine there's there's much um for any of that liaison and advisory committee reports. Um other topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair. I gotta say, none of this is, was anticipated for any time. So uh we'll uh we'll be taking, playing this by ear going forward. Brings us to our last public forum. Is there anybody in?
I I do have one comment, Sean, um eh from Lisa Kent at Twenty-One Mill Road Sandwich, who also happens to be one of our speakers. An apparent, please consider postponing graduation and prom, not canceling it. The seniors are so worried about this and hearing that it can be postponed is something they are looking for and not canceled. And we couldn't agree more with that, Lisa. We know that too. It's just, we got to figure out how to make it happen.
Right.
But we are working on that diligently. I I talk a lot about this with Mr. Mulcahy, so. We're a hundred percent on board. We all remember fondly those events in our senior years. So what can it do? What can we make it look like? So. We'll get there.
Very good. Um announcements and closing remarks. Um any of anything we'd like to announce?
Uh not announced, but can I just remind everybody in the public, uh you know, all the twenty thousand people that are watching this? Uh reminder that we are serving lunch every single day from eleven to one. If you drive to the right of the high school, kind of towards the back, you're going to see a big tent on the. Side bus loop. Um they, no questions asked. Any person in in town uh can get it. We also have food that has been um donated, significant amounts of food. Uh we're getting another delivery tomorrow morning between nine and ten. And so we have uh those that need it. Should not want for anything more than what we have. So uh please make sure people know that if you come up between eleven and one, we'll take care of you.
Great.
I guess um just closing remarks. We've all uh been been part of something here tonight, the first ever mobile or remote school committee meeting. Um not for the greatest of reasons, but I think we got through it quite well. Um and again, just great job to everybody involved and everybody, you know, Dr. Gould, all the teachers in our, in our, in our community. Uh for coming together right now. Um I think it's uh really speaks to the town and the district that we're in.
Yeah.
You're here.
Well said, Sean.
So um and with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I move that the school commer- adjourns till next April eighth, twenty twenty in a Google Hangout.
Motion by Carrie.
I love it. I second it.
Second by Angela. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, uh the motion, the all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, the meeting is adjourned. Our next meeting is April eighth, two thousand and twenty. Um maybe location or medium to be determined. But uh that'll be at seven P M. Good night, Sandwich.
Night. Thank you all.
Everyone. Good night.
Good night.